Here, click, join, click here. That on. Zoom meetings. And I think my speaker goes off. Leave. My computer audio, I don't want to do that, I'll use that. Microphone off. There we go, there's two. Where am I?
Is the hearing going to be on Zoom too?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's the same.
There's everybody. Except I didn't start my video. There I am, okay.
All right, I think everybody's here, and whenever Medfield TV is ready to start, we can start. We're good? All right, good evening and welcome to the first, the 6:00 PM meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order placing, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 18, and Governor Baker's March 15th, 2020 order placing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in any one place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation, and no in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted. However, every effort has been made to ensure that members of the public who wish to access the proceedings while in progress may do so as provided for in the order. As a reminder, persons wishing to view this meeting while in progress may follow the instructions on the meeting notice for the 6:00 PM meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. The reason, as with all of our meetings, this meeting is being video recorded. The reason for this public session is to discuss the discipline or dismissal of Inspector of Wires Peter Diamond. Mr. Diamond was notified of this meeting in writing at least 48 hours in advance. It was originally posted as a meeting executive session. However, Mr. Diamond requested that it be held in open session. The purpose of this meeting is to consider charges against Mr. Diamond, and if charge or charges are substantiated, what actions should be taken by the board, including an up to dismissal. The charges against Mr. Diamond are set forth in a notice of removal hearing from Town Administrator Christine Truylle to Mr. Diamond dated March 24th, 2021, which I will refer to as the May 24th notice. I would now ask people who are participating in this hearing to identify themselves and their purpose for being here. I will start with counsel for the town, Antoine Ferris.
Hi, my name is Antoine Ferris, counsel for the town. I'll be presenting the charges against Mr. Diamond in this matter.
Leo Pellican, I'm here with Mr. Ferris, also is labor counsel to the town.
And Mr. Diamond?
Peter Diamond, Inspector of Wires, Town of Medfield.
Okay, and am I correct, Mr. Diamond, that you're not represented at this hearing?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so here's how we will proceed with the hearing. Attorney Antoine Ferris for the town will first summarize for the board the charges and the evidence in support of the charges as set forth in the May 24th notice. Mr. Diamond will then have an opportunity to summarize his position and/or provide information in support of his position. We can, the members of the board can then ask questions. And I would just ask for all parties that information submitted and documents provided should be relevant to the charges noted in the May 24th notice. We'll then conduct the hearing, we will deliberate and decide, and then vote on preparing a decision at the conclusion of the hearing. So I'll now ask Antoine Ferris, counsel for the town, to proceed.
Good evening, board members. So you should all have the pertinent exhibits that I sent around today. There's a lot of overlap between what Mr. Diamond has submitted and what we submitted, and most of what we submitted is really pertinent to the charges. And some of the documents that Mr. Diamond submitted is not so relevant, so we thought it was best to make our own submission. So to start, to his credit, based on the submissions of Mr. Diamond, he does not dispute that. He understands the terms of his employment, and the terms of his employment, which is to be paid per inspection. And that includes also a mileage stipend, or a mileage reimbursement, and an educational reimbursement. So with that said, it is also clear that Mr. Diamond received the job description for this position in January of 2021, before being appointed for this position. The building commissioner handed him the job description at a meeting, gave him a hard copy of the job description. And the job description, and that is exhibit number two, town exhibit number two, clearly has a compensation section, which lays out the compensation that he is to be paid for this position, which is to be paid per inspection. So there is no dispute about his pay and what he should be paid. And he is really an at-will employee. And he could be satisfied with his condition. If not, he's free to go elsewhere and get appointed. But the issue here is not his opinion about whether the town is fairly compensating him, and the issue here is not about whether he's happy or not with what the town is compensating him. And he might make the argument that the town is paying him a low fee per inspection. Don't let that distract you from the real issues here. But in any event, even if we go into that argument, the town is in the mid-range of paying the inspector per inspection, based on the data we've gathered thus far. So take it to the real issues in this case. And the real issue here is that Mr. Diamond effectively resigned from his position by refusing to commit to the employment, to the terms of his employment, even when asked by the building commissioner to confirm his commitment to the terms of employment. So the commissioner met with Mr. Diamond, and they had a meeting. And at that meeting, the building commissioner explained to Mr. Diamond that there's a process for increasing his pay, and that the annual budget had already been approved for fiscal year 2020, and same goes for fiscal year 2021. And therefore, and also confirmed that in writing as well, stated the same effect, that there's a process for doing this. And in his email to Mr. Diamond, he asked him to confirm whether he is willing to continue under the terms of his employment. And he has not, to this day, confirmed that he would do so. What does he do instead? Instead, in response, he sends, Mr. Diamond sends the building commissioner, a list of demands, a list of demands. First, it starts off, I have made the following determination, he made determination, that he should be paid this much, and this much, and this much. Okay? So look at it this way, if you're really hiring an employee, and you're discussing terms and conditions of their employment, and the employee comes to you and says, hey, the applicant says to you, hey, I need this, and that, and this, and that, well, the question is, are you willing to accept the position under the terms I'm offering you? Or are you just making your own demands? And that's what happened here, effectively. So pretty much, Mr. Diamond, the building commissioner, I mean, what do you expect him to do? He had to instruct Mr. Diamond not to do any more inspections, as any reasonable person would do. Otherwise, if he had done those inspections first, the town would be liable to pay him the additional hours that he might want, he's asking to be paid for, and the additional compensation he's asking for. So with that said, that's where, that's our first, really, our first theory as to why Mr. Diamond has effectively resigned. And it's not really, if you look at it, it's not really a formal resignation. And we'll go through step by step what he exactly said in the letter, and I point out to you what the actual conditions that he imposed on his own. Although it's not an effective, a formal resignation, it is in fact a legal resignation, and there's actually an analogous, analogous decision, appellate court decision on this, where wiring inspector pretty much said the same thing to the board of selectmen, and he made, he said, hey, I'm not willing to proceed under the terms of your disof employment. And the court held that, look, you effectively resigned by your own conduct, no different than here, no different than here. And while Mr. Diamond might argue that, that the list of demands that he submitted to the town are just mere proposal, well, as we go through the documents, that's not the case, that's not really the case. There's nothing in there being proposed, it's clear demands on the town. So now, aside from that, and worse yet, aside from all that, Mr. Diamond engages in further conduct, including repeated insubordination, and including attempting to undermine the authority of the building commissioner, and to influence another employee from performing their assigned duties. And just to go through all that, when the building commissioner instructed Mr. Diamond not to do any more inspections until the matter is resolved, the compensation matter is resolved by the town, and the demands are addressed by the human resource department, what does he do? The next day, he goes and contacts the assistant wiring director, and directs him not to do any inspections, clearly undermining the authority of the building commissioner. Telling him, directing him not to do any inspections, clear, it's all documented, it's nothing he said, she said. Mr. Diamond confirmed that in an email, in an email to the building commissioner, says, hey, I directed him not to do inspections. Well, look, that's not only insubordination, that undermines the services that the town is providing to the public, it obstructs those services. Okay? So, and that's not where it stops, you can't really make this up, it even goes further. Mr. Pelletier, the building commissioner, tells Mr. Diamond not to repeat that conduct, and that he has engaged in subordination and undermined his authority, and directs him to cease and desist from doing so. The next day, next day, gets on the phone with the assistant wiring director, who had been instructed and directed by the building commissioner to do certain assignments, he tells him, hey, I'm the building inspector here, I'm sorry, I'm the inspector of wires here, I'm in charge, pretty much, I'm in charge, so let me do the inspections, okay? I have the authority under the statute, that's his argument, I have the authority, which is clearly not the case, it's the building commissioner that has the authority to administer the department, and pretty much directs him not to do the inspections. Clearly, insubordination, clearly undermining the authority of the building commissioner, clear, and it's all documented, as we will go through it. So just to really, just to really go back to the resignation case, and as you'll see from the exhibits that we submitted this afternoon to the board members, and Mr. Diamond should have a copy himself as well. So it really starts off with, the main issues here, so let's focus on the main issues here, starts off with exhibit number four. After meeting with Mr. Diamond, exhibit number four, May 17, emailed from the building commissioner to Mr. Diamond, asking to confirm his commitment to continue under the current terms of employment. So if you look at the last two paragraphs, last two sentences of that email, therefore, the building commissioner says, therefore, in closing, this response, I fully expect and request that you formally confirm that you will continue to willfully and faithfully execute your duties and responsibilities you accepted as the Medfield Inspector of Wires. And he has not done so to this day. And then he goes on to say, I expect and accept, I will expect and accept your formal resignation without further delay if you're not willing to continue under the current terms of employment, which is to be paid per inspections. Okay? So now, the next thing, in response, exhibit number five, town exhibit number five, Mr. Diamond sends an email to the building commissioner, and failing to commit to the current terms of employment, clearly, but instead sends a list of demands, as I highlighted initially. He first talks off, I in no way will resign from my appointed position, but he effectively did so by his own words, as we will go through it. And I only ask for fair compensation. And then he says, surely, the town of Medfield cannot expect me to do work without compensation, so basically saying, hey, you're not paying me, I'm not doing this work. And we'll go through the list right now, the next page, if you look at it. So that's his letter, it's also in attachment, exhibit, town exhibit number five, the second page. So in that letter, it starts off, I had made the following determinations. And if you really look at paragraph number two, so he pretty much assigns, he changes the procedures for doing the inspections. He says, look, I get the final review of this, I get the final review, and therefore, when I do the final review, I should be compensated under paragraph three, where it says, I will be paid one hour for the permit approval by reporting a review in the people's permitting system. That's not the procedure, that's not the compensation that was agreed upon, that's entirely different. He's being paid per inspection. So he imposed his own terms and conditions. And then he says, if there's additional review, I will report another hour. Okay? And then, if you look at paragraph number four, in the middle of it, he says, I will be paid one hour for each field inspection, which is different than being paid per inspection. And then at the end, last paragraph, beginning July 1st, 2021, the compensation rate for each hour above will increase to $40, with a 3% increase. Now, look, that's not negotiating with the town, he's demanding this, he's demanding this.
Mr. Ferris, can I just interrupt for a moment and just ask you to wrap up here, so we can get Mr. Diamond's response, thank you.
That's pretty much the list of demands. And just to go back quickly on the insubordination piece, so you have the exhibits in front of you, and the summary in front of the exhibits that really lays out what the exhibits are about, and number six, email from the building commissioner, telling him not to do any inspections. And the town exhibit number seven, pretty much says, I directed him not to do any inspection, referring to the assistant wiring perspective. So you get the drift here, it's really, it's not a case about fair compensation, otherwise we wouldn't be here having this removal hearing if it was all about fair compensation. So this case is really about Mr. Diamond effectively resigning. And in addition to that, separate, apart from that, Mr. Diamond engaging in other misconduct that undermined the authority of the building commissioner and the department itself. So in conclusion, the board should look at it as two prongs here, and the board should take two different votes on here. And our recommendation would be, first, to find that Mr. Diamond, by refusing, by refusing to this day, to commit to the current terms of employment, he had effectively resigned from his position. He effectively resigned from his position. And in the event that Mr. Diamond rescinds his recognition at this hearing, we urge the board to deny that request. Second, separate apart from his noncommittal in the resignation, the board should revoke his appointment, further conduct he engaged in, as I listed before, for obstructing the services the department is providing to the town, undermining the authority of the building commissioner, and trying to influence another employee by using his position to not perform certain duties. And that's really the summary of the case.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. All right, Mr. Diamond, I had that at about 15 or 16 minutes, so you'll have up to that amount of time at least to respond, you don't have to take it all, but in fairness, that's about how much time I account for that, so the floor is yours to respond now.
All right, thank you. First, I would ask if you all received the package I circulated this morning?
Did.
Had time to review it?
Yes.
Yes.
And no, I'm not being represented here today by an attorney. Basically, I can't afford an attorney. I guess I should focus on some of the key points the attorney brought to your attention here. I would go over a brief description of my position. I was hired by the town of Medfield in 2005 as Assistant Inspector of Wires under James Leonard. At that time, I was making $24.42 per hour, and per memorandum received from Mike Sullivan, the town administrator at the time, on June 15th, 2005, I was paid $1 for mileage per inspection. So per inspection. My characterization of inspection would be getting in my vehicle, going to the job, doing the inspection, and then recording pass or fail, and turning that inspection into the office. That's how I did inspections for the town of Medfield from 2005 until approximately 2014. In 2009, approximately, the $1 mileage reimbursement per inspection was increased from $1 to $2.50. Walter Tortorelli was part-time building inspector at the time, and Pat Iafolo was the office administrator. Daily, I would go into the office when inspections were assigned to me, pick up the slips that she had created for the inspections, and went and did the inspection, and the following business day, I would turn that slip in, and everything was handled internally in the office. In 2015, the town of Medfield transferred from paper recording to online permit recording through the people's permitting system. And at that time, inspections were now being recorded by the inspector in the system, so there was an added workload, and, which created more time, office time, which I have stated is outside of doing the inspection. In May of 2018, I asked Mr. Naff for a stipend to cover some of the added work. On May 17th and 18th, I discussed the stipend issue with Christine Truyla, and she said the matter would need to go in front of the personnel board. I asked her to let me know when the personnel board would be meeting. I asked about the stipend monies and Article 10 earmarked for inspectors, which was on the town warrant. This appropriation is on Medfield's warrant yearly, but the money has never been paid to me. Christine also stated I was paid per inspection and mileage per inspection. Christine never responded to arrange a meeting with the personnel board. So that was in 2018, in March of 2020, the second time I approached Mr. Pelletier, now the building commissioner, about the stipend. And this was in March 2020, when we were all faced with the COVID-19 pandemic. We were told at the time to quarantine for two weeks, we were faced with the COVID-19 pandemic. Well, that two weeks turned into 15 months, and at the time, I offered to help out Jim Leonard and do inspections for the two weeks, given his age, and it was agreed that I would do inspections. I performed those inspections for 15 months during the COVID-19 pandemic, from March of 2020 through May of 2021. All inspections were performed at the site, and then all inspections were recorded in the people's online permitting system at home, at my home and my office. Everything was done remotely. So in May, um, excuse me. In May of 2020, I approached Mr. Pelletier, asked for a stipend and an increase in compensation, but was told no, because the budgets were already approved, and cuts were being made for everyone, so I let it be at that point. I would like to state at this point that my mileage had been changed from per inspection to per site visit. For 15 months, from March 20th through May 21, during the global pandemic, I performed all inspections for the town of Medfield. During this period, many Medfield employees were allowed to stay home without, with their benefits and with full compensation. In January of 21, Jim Leonard retired as Inspector of Wires, and I was appointed the Inspector of Wires. On May 14th, 2021, at 11:00 AM, I had a meeting with Medfield Building Department, with Gary Pelletier, to discuss my compensation. The topics of discussion presented by me were, I was doing many tasks without compensation, and I provided a remote office of the town of Medfield's work. I was working more than 20 hours per week, and expressed that the position should be a paid, benefited position. I was told again that budgets were already approved and cuts were being made. I asked that he consider my proposals and respond on Monday. And as the attorney already stated, on Monday, May 17th, at 9:19 AM, Mr. Pelletier responded and said there would be no change of compensation, and at that point, I was provided the job's description. I'd like to state, that is the first time that I ever got a job description from the town of Medfield. For the 16 years and three months that I worked there, it was only orally stated to me that I get paid by inspection, and I get reimbursed per inspection for mileage. He further expressed that if I were unable to work under Medfield's compensation for my position, he would expect my resignation. As the attorney stated, I was unwilling to resign from my position, and I wanted to perform my duties as Inspector of Wires, appointed by the selectmen of Medfield. And I was available to do the work without disability. At that point, all my work was assigned to my assistant by Mr. Pelletier. Any access to incoming notices for inspection or permits by elect- Any access to incoming notices for inspection or permits by electrical contractors was denied access by me. My access to the Medfield Electronic Permitting System was removed. That's in all the exhibits. On the statement by the attorney that I directed the assistant, Mr. Cook, to not do inspections, I adamantly deny that. I only told Mr. Cook that I was available without disability to do inspections, period. I never told him not to do inspections. If Mr. Cook is in attendance, I would appreciate that he be allowed to comment on that accusation during this hearing. And again, my job description has never been given to me until Monday, May 17. And the description, job description, is within line with the online permitting system, which was not in existence when I was hired in 2005. So see my records request that I hereby request a dated copy of my job description in effect from when I was hired in January 2005 from the appropriate Board or department, such as Medfield's Personnel Board or Human Resources. And I ask to be provided any change in job description that was subsequently officially approved during my employment with the Town of Medfield over the past 16 years and three months. I want to be provided, I ask to be provided with a record of the Town of Medfield's action by the Selectmen accepting Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 166, Section 32A, and the date accepted. In my opinion, without this section being accepted, the Town of Medfield cannot even appoint an Assistant Inspector of Wires. I ask the Council to review that. Please provide an official copy of Medfield Assistant Inspector of Wire, Mr. Cook's appointment with the date of appointment and expiration. At this point, I'm not sure that his appointment is even official, so I've asked for that copy of that. And then I would like to go on to my comments on Mr. Pelletier's actions relative to the situation. In my opinion, my suspension from my position by Mr. Pelletier as Medfield's appointed Inspector of Wires was in retaliation to my request for fair compensation and review of my pay and duties. With regard to the attorney's assumption that I demanded a pay change, that was proposed pay change. That was not a demand. Any request or direction given by me to Mr. Pelletier in the Town of Medfield Woods within line of Massachusetts general laws and regulations relative to my position and authority, these actions cannot be insubordinate as I was trying to properly execute my duties as appointed at the appointed position of Inspector of Wires for the Town of Medfield. According to the job description given by me, by Mr. Pelletier on May 17, 2021, I am to supervise the Medfield Deputy Wiring Inspector. So I further argue that any conversation that I had with the assistant was part of my job description. And furthermore, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, 32A, the Assistant Inspector may only act in my absence or disability. I daily reported to Mr. Pelletier on multiple occasions during the week of May 17 that I was available without disability to perform my duties and willing to do so as the appointed Inspector of Wires. My actions are within the Medfield job description and the state law, so they cannot be insubordinate. Further, I would like to state that Mr. Pelletier's actions of suspending me from my appointed positions are with malice and conversely may be considered meddling and obstruction of my legal duties as the Medfield Appointed Inspector of Wires. And I'd like to say to the three Selectmen here that I want to continue my appointed position as Medfield's Inspector of Wires according to the laws and regulation in the State of Massachusetts. I ask that the Medfield Board of Selectmen to reinstate, if I had been suspended, to reinstate me, and then do a full review of the facts related to this hearing, review my employment history and file. And I also ask that you review the Inspector of Wires' duties and compensation to be updated as was stated in the hearing, that this is a long time-approved Town of Medfield compensation But my duties as inspector have changed. And if I have a few more minutes, I'd just like to go over the highlights of my position. In the fall of 2005, after a few months of employment for the Town of Medfield, I provided project management of the Medfield Extreme Home Makeover, the new home project on Hospital Road for the Johnson family. Jim Leonard asked me to run the project, and without hesitation, I said yes. I oversaw the electrical installation by 10 electrical companies and 43 electricians. All of us worked on the electrical installation and provided much of the materials free of charge. This was the most rewarding act of generosity forgiving that I have had experienced in my life. As far as covering as assistant for Jim Leonard, I provided inspection coverage for Jim Leonard on all occasions when asked. I covered for Jim during his two-month vacations to Aruba. I covered when Jim was, had his shoulder surgery and was out for a significant amount of time for recovery. And as stated above, I took on all inspections for 15 months during the COVID-19 global pandemic. I also provided emergency response services for the Town of Medfield, many emergency response services. During late August 2011, I responded to over a dozen hazard situations from Hurricane I provide all the solar PV electrical inspections in review for the Town of Medfield, every one of them. I provide all the large product, project electrical inspections, such as the Montrose School, the new police fire station, the sewer treatment plant, ground mount solar system, and the 120 North Meadows 2-megawatt rooftop solar, as long as many of the 40B projects that have undergone development in Medfield, such as the park. I have self-educated myself on solar PV installation, and I'm regarded as one of the leading experts in Massachusetts on correct solar inspection and installation per the Massachusetts Electric Code. I identified engineering deficiencies in the system design with the solar projects at 120 North Meadows, the Medfield Sewer Treatment Plant, and now the 93 West Street Solar Rooftop System, which is incomplete. In September of 2020, I was attacked and bitten by a dog while trying to do an inspection. I have never been disciplined in the 16 years and three months for my job performance. I am the most active inspector in the Town of Medfield Building Department, and I still have two active appeals with the State Board of Examiners of Electrician that need resolution. I cannot resolve these if removed from my position. I think that sums up my presentation, Mr. Selectman. I provided the package with all the exhibits that coincide with the statements I've made. And I just would like to once again say that I did not direct Mr. Cook to not do inspections. I only stated that I was available without disability.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. We'll now move on to questions from the Board, starting with Pete Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Diamond, I guess I interpret this as a, as you looking for a change. The way I see all the documents together is that you were looking for a change in your, in your compensation. Is that correct, how it all started?
Yes, and if you reviewed my package, you can see that I approached this subject three times, in 2018, 2020, and 2021.
And then you didn't get the response that you were hoping for. And as I see the documents and the emails that we've presented, it looks like Mr. Pelletier, then on May 17, after having conferred with you in person, is asking you to actually formally confirm whether you're willing to proceed under the current pay plan. Did you understand that that's what he was doing in that May 17 email?
Somewhat I understand what he was asking. Yes, sir.
But then you responded later that same day with a different plan for attached as a permanent inspection procedure going forward, also included as a proposed compensation change. So you were still at that point on May 17 looking to change the compensation plan, I think. Isn't that correct?
Proposed change, correct. Proposed change for all involved to look at, and this was conveyed to me by Christine in May of 2018 that it would be presented in front of the Personnel Board, and that never transpired.
And so I can, so it sounds like what you're saying is that you didn't see what you expected to happen, and so then on, it looks like on May 17, you're laying down what you think is the appropriate compensation going forward in the future. Is that correct?
There's a proposed compensation outline that would possibly go in front of the Personnel Board. Yes, sir.
I guess I would, just a comment, not a question. Is it okay to make a comment now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess the problem, Mr. Diamond, that I have at that point is that the, Mr. Pelletier had laid down a pretty clear marker at that point, that he was looking for you to agree to go forward. I fully expect and request that you formally confirm going forward under the current pay plan, so you were diverging from what he was looking to have you do at that point, I think.
Well, my compensation proposal was something to be looked at going forward. It was not a denial to perform my duties, and I daily told Mr. Pelletier that I was available to do inspections.
Yep, okay. The other thing that I would, and again, it's not a question so much as a, just a comment, I'm looking at your email from May 18, so the next day, from the two that we were just talking about, and you're talking, referring to Mr. Bill Cook, and you, I'll read what you wrote. It says, "I have directed him that he is not to do any inspections as I am available." And that's close quote. And I understand that you're saying that you were available, therefore you should be doing them, because you're the wiring inspector and he's only the assistant, but that sounds like you're directing him not to do it, which is part of the insubordination claim that's being made against you.
I believe that email was sent to Gary Pelletier and not to Bill Cook, though. Is that the email we're talking about?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
I believe that email was sent to Gary Pelletier. It was not in any direction that I gave to Mr. Cook, which is the basis of my insubordination. I did not, did not direct Mr. Cook to not do inspections.
Okay, that's just different than what you wrote on that day, so that...
Is Mr. Cook available to comment?
I don't know. I heard you asked for that. I'm certainly happy to hear from him if the Chair is.
I think we can get there after the question period, because then it would open up whether we would hear additional people beyond Mr. Cook as well, and I'd want to ask Council for the Town about that. So I'll defer that. I understand your request, Mr. Diamond. I understand your request, Pete, and I have no objection to it, but let's see where we are after the question period.
The last question that I had, Mr. Diamond, is the, when all of this was going on, you clearly knew the terms of the per-inspection methodology that the town was paying wiring inspectors, correct?
Wasn't really clear, sir, because I was never given a job description, so my interpretation of per-inspection is doing the inspection on the job. The additional work is what I question. The office work, the inputs into the electronic system, that all changed in my job description and my, my duties that I was expected to do in 2015 when the town started doing electronic permitting. So that's why I asked for my exact job description from when I was hired and any change in that.
But from 2005 right through currently, you were paid on the basis of a per-inspection rate, weren't you?
Yes, I was, sir.
Yeah, okay, that's all I had. Thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Diamond. Let me start, first off, I'm not, I'm the one who's not the lawyer on this board, so if I don't follow legal structures, you'll understand why. I want to start just sharing a couple of observations I developed in looking at your package, and much of what was in your package was also in the Town's package here. It's not lost on me that you're a longstanding employee of this town. You've been here, by your, I think your record's from 2005. It's not lost on me that there have been a number of occasions when you've stepped forward to do what you could do to help out the town when things, you know, needed, needed someone to step forward. Not, certainly not the least or most, it's the most recent COVID-19 situation where it sounds like you were willing to expose yourself to some potential risks that other people may have chosen not to do. So from the standpoint of who I see you as, as a longstanding Town employee, I want to, I want to start there and recognize that. I would repeat or endorse Mr. Peterson's observation that it sounds to me like this whole thing blew up initially as a compensation issue, but we are here to discuss an insubordinate, you know, insubordination or behavioral issues that are leading to potential dismissal. So I want to ask you a few questions, some of which are actually going back over what Mr. Peterson covered. I want to go back first to that May, and this is in your package, I think it's Exhibit I 2. The email that you sent to Gary Pelletier on the 18th, "Hi, Bill Cook," I read, "Hi, Bill Cook is not to do electrical inspections as I am available. I have directed him that he is not to do any inspections as I am available." Now, you've said you didn't tell Bill Cook not to do that, and I'm reading direct words, I believe in your words, to Gary Pelletier that you did, so can you, can you help me understand that?
I may have misrepresented what actually transpired between myself and Bill Cook, because I never directed him not to do inspections.
Okay, all right.
I said I was available.
Okay.
Without disability.
Next, I'd like to go to your May 17. Again, it's the full page. It's the proposal, it's what you said is the proposal that you sent to Mr. Pelletier, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna obviously read the whole thing, I'm gonna start with the first sentence. "As a follow-up to our office discussion on Friday regarding my position, I have made the following determinations regarding electrical permits and inspections." Now, you're characterizing this as a proposal. I can't find any words on this page that suggest you were telling anyone that this was a proposal and not in fact a demand, and that's kind of important, because that's part of what's driving this insubordination charge. Can you point out anything in this page from May 17 that suggests you are merely suggesting this as opposed to demanding it as you've been charged with?
What evidence is this, sir?
This is the May 17, came out under your official letterhead to Gary with your five items that, it's the, it's the memo that you've indicated with simply proposed changes, but I don't see anything in here that sounds like a proposed, a proposal. I sound like, it sounds to me like it's basically telling some- telling someone what it's gonna be going forward.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the, the, you know...
It's Exhibit I, 10 in your package, Mr. Diamond.
I, thank you. All right, so in this letter, there, there's outlines my job performance and what I'm supposed to do on the Massachusetts general law.
Uh, I don't think that's the one I'm talking about. It's,
This one here, right?
It's I, 10, yeah. This is, this outlines-
As a follow-up to our office discussion on Friday regarding my position, I have following determinations.
Okay, yep.
There's, there's five, there's five bullet items?
Yep.
Yes, sir. So what was the question again?
My, my question is, I think you've characterized this, this particular message as a proposal you were submitting for possible submission to the Personnel Board. I was asking if you can point out anything on this page that makes it clear you are merely proposing something and not kind of laying down a set of specific demands on what you will be paid going forward from here.
Well, I asked for the consideration to be on October 1st, 2021 in the end, and possibly to take a look at it by July 1st, 2022.
So the very tail end is where you're, so you're, okay. So at the, you're not, you're not suggesting this is something that goes into effect immediately? This is something that you're asking for consideration?
Exactly. And some of the other bullet items are things that are required. It's part, it's part of the permit process, like Bullet Number 2, to ask that the Building Department secure proper licensure, a certificate of liability insurance, and work as compensation affidavit. That's all required to be given prior to issuing a permit. And permits will be in issue with my name on them without this, this documentation in place.
Just a quick question on this, in light of something Mr. Ferris mentioned. He said that this made process changes. Is that the current way this process works in the Building Department, or were you changing the process?
The process in the Building Department was the office administrator was reviewing permits. And supposed to begin proof of licensure, proof of insurances. But in my review of permits before I did inspections, a lot of that material was missing, and the permit was already issued. So this letter is, gives direction that I'm concerned about that, and I want to make sure that I review it, because I'm the Mass General Law, I'm the one that's supposed to review permits.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll make an observation that the tone of this sounds directive, which at least helps me understand why the issue of insubordination came in. I at least recognize the, the tail end when you asked for consideration by October 1st. I, I guess I could infer that this was a request, not a, a directive, but it, it, it read like a directive to me. So I at least understand the reaction to it. Now, I have two general questions. One, what's your view of the building inspector's authority over you as the wiring inspector?
Well, according to the job description, I report to him. So I report to him if, if I have an issue with an inspection or if I see a property where there should be a building permit, I report to him. Over the 15 months during COVID-19, and most of the time that I worked with Medfield, I worked independently. With only occasional check-ins by the building official that was appointed during my 16 years. Only occasional check-ins. Aside from that, I've worked independently.
Appreciate that, but my question was, what's your view of the building inspector's authority over you as the wiring inspector?
Well, he's the, um, he's the department head.
So if he gives you a direction, you have an obligation to follow it?
As long as it's within the law.
Fair enough. Okay. And then the other question I have for you, I know you, in a couple of your memos, you talked about the, the rate you were paid per inspection going back several years. I know, so I know the rate's gone up over the entire time you've been with the department. But can you give me a sense of whether, where that rate has gone over the last three to five years? In other words, does it routinely go up on an annual basis? Has it been stationary for five years? I, I just don't have a sense of how that adjustment's been made.
It started at 2442, and right now I'm at 3286. I haven't done math on that to figure out what the annual raise might have been.
When's the last time it, when was the last time it was adjusted upward?
I believe in 2019, it was a pay freeze for 2020.
Okay, so, okay.
Because of COVID.
Those were my questions.
All right. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Diamond, just following up on a couple of things that, that Gus and Pete asked about. I mean, at any point since these discussions with Mr. Pelletier began, did you ever confirm to him that you would perform inspections over the next fiscal year according to the current compensation plan for inspections at 3286 per inspection plus the mileage reimbursement?
I confirmed that I would perform my job daily, and that he told me that there was a proposed increase for the next fiscal budget. Not exactly how much though.
But my question is, did you ever say to him, "Okay, I want more money, but I understand for the next year what the deal is, and I'll continue to accept what the current deal is until it's reviewed"?
We didn't really have that compensation. I was removed from the position on Tuesday, May 25, and there was no more correspondence about compensation from that point forward.
Well, I'm talking about before then, though. I mean, after the meeting on the 14th and before the removal, did you ever say, regardless of what I said in my May 17, 2020 memo, I understand that until this is formally revised by the Personnel Board or by the town, that your compensation would remain the same?
The subject was not discussed between myself and Mr. Pelletier.
And when, when you were telling Mr. Pelletier that you were available to do inspections and that you expected to be assigned the available inspections, what did you expect to be paid for those inspections?
I expected to be paid under current compensation until my proposal was considered.
And then going back to the May 17, 2021 memo, so I, I, based on what you told Mr. Murby, you think, your view was that this review by October 1st, 2021, applied to everything in the memo?
I think that was relative to compensation. The other directives are how to Mass General Law, part of the directives, and how to my, for example, licensing and permits and insurance. It's all required before a permit can be issued, and permits will be in issue without that documentation with my name on the permit. I was very concerned about that.
Was it, I mean, is it also your view that it's required by Mass General Law that you're paid one hour for the permit approval by recording a review in the people's permitting system?
No.
And then with respect to the, the, we've now characterized as a request, though, for the increase on July 1st, 2021 to $40 for the 3% annual increase, is it, is it your position that that request wasn't supposed to take effect July 1st, 2021, but was gonna be reviewed in October?
It was a proposal to be reviewed by the Personnel Board, something that I was told in 2018 by the town administrator that would be taken in front of them.
Right. Because I, I would just say, for me, I mean, I read that October 1st, 2021 date to apply to your request that the position be changed to a part-time benefited position-
Suggested.
And not to the rest of it, right. And, and so-
I just suggested that, sir. That was a proposal. I, I'm working more than 20 hours per week, and I felt that it should be a paid benefited position.
And then with respect to the directive, or the alleged directive to Mr. Cook not to perform inspections, I mean, you acknowledged that you sent this email to Mr. Pelletier saying that you told Mr. Cook not to perform inspections.
Once again, I'll state that I asked Mr. Cook, I told Mr. Cook that I was available for inspections without disability. So at this point, if Mr. Cook's available, I would ask that he answer that question.
Well, we can get to that, and I'll defer to my colleagues. And I, I just want to, I mean, you, you told Mr. Pelletier that you directed Mr. Cook not to do inspections, correct?
I did not direct Mr. Cook to not do inspections.
But you told Mr. Pelletier that you had. Right?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm reading your email on the 18th. You told Mr. Pelletier that I, that's you, have directed him, that's Mr. Cook, that he is not to do any inspections as you are available. And that's what you wrote, correct?
As I am available, correct.
So I mean, Mr. Pelletier can be forgiven for thinking that you had told Mr. Cook not to do inspections since you told him you told Mr. Cook not to do inspections. Right?
Yes, sir.
Right. I mean, I think that's, that's part of the concern here. I, I understand from Mr. Pelletier's perspective, it would seem to him that you were kind of interfering with the operation of the department to get leverage in your salary negotiation. And I understand you'd say that's not what was happening, but I think he could probably be forgiven for understa, understanding it that way. No?
No, that was, that was not what was happening, sir. I disagree with that. I think Mr. Pelletier's actions were retaliation for asking for the compensation.
I understand your, your perspective on that. But it sounds like, at least before tonight, you've not confirmed to him that you were gonna proceed according to the existing compensation package.
I daily told Mr. Pelletier that I was available to do inspections in my name, so...
So Pete and Gus, would you like to hear from Mr. Cook?
If he's available, sure.
Do you want to hear from Mr. Cook, Pete?
I, I'm not opposed to hearing from him. I, I don't feel the need to hear from him at this point, actually.
If he's there.
Mr. Cook, I'll, I'll hear briefly from Mr. Cook on this point. Mr. Ferris, any objection?
Mr. Cook is not at this hearing at this moment, unless if I am mistaken.
Let's see, there is a William among the attendees, and if that William is William Cook, and he's willing to appear and turn on his camera and speak, I'll hear him briefly on this question of what Mr. Diamond told him. And if that William is not William Cook, then we'll move on.
Just a brief comment, please, if you will, Chairman. The documents speak to itself, really. It's, he memorializes the email to Mr. Pelletier, and, and I'll leave it at that.
Understood. All right. Well, I don't know if, if, then, Mr. Diamond, do you know if the William here is William Cook? I mean, if, if it is, if you could hit the hand raise button, and, and I'm happy to hear from him.
I don't see any of the other attendees at the meeting. I'm only allowed to see the selectmen, the lawyers, and the town administrator.
Well, I, I understand. I know if he had told you that that's who he was. It looks like William's hand is up, and so if, Christine, if we could promote William, and then if that is in fact Mr. Cook, if Mr. Cook could turn on his camera and identify himself, we'll hear briefly from Mr. Cook.
Can, can the board hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, is there any way to get you to turn on your camera, just for the, the record here?
I can start video. You got me?
Yep, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Cook.
You're welcome.
So you've been, you've been listening to the hearing. And, Mr. Diamond, if you want to ask Mr. Cook a question or ask him to address, I think the question is to, to you, Mr. Cook, is, is what you were told by Mr. Diamond with respect to doing inspections during the-
Why don't I just address this? Because on Tuesday, May 18, at 10:39 in the morning, Pete and I conversed on text. And I'm gonna read you his exact text to me. I wasn't privy to the email that was sent to Gary Pelletier, so I can't speak about that. But Pete, because I actually addressed out to him that I was getting inspections sent to me from the town of Medfield, and how do you want me to proceed with this? And this was his exact response to me. "Thank you for contacting me, Bill. I am the appointed inspector wires. I am available to do inspections for the town of Medfield today." And that was my correspondence with Pete. If that helps.
Okay. Anything else?
That was it. That's where Pete and I stopped talking about the situation. And I let Pete move forward with Gary, with Gary being the department head.
Okay. And have you been doing inspections over the last week and a half?
I actually have, yes.
Okay. Peter, Gus, any questions for Mr. Cook?
No.
Uh, Mr. Diamond, any, any questions for Mr. Cook?
No questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Cook. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Peter, Gus, any further questions for Mr. Diamond or Mr. Ferris?
No.
I, I have one, one question for, for Mr. Ferris, because I think it's-
Can I, can I ask, I ask one question for Mr. Diamond. What's bothering me about this whole situation is the, the third piece of this is that I mentioned your longstanding service. I also, I didn't mention the memo or the, the message from Mr. Pelletier acknowledging the quality of what you do. And so the piece that's bothering me about this on behalf of the town is it would appear that we have a town employee, part-time town employee, who has demonstrated the ability to do a credible job, who's demonstrated both in terms of what you've said in your package and in terms of what you've done over your time with the town, that you have a commitment to being willing to serve the town, who has gotten into a dogfight with your boss over compensation. And my read on this is that some of what you have communicated, perhaps because it had a bit of emotion in it, was a bit more assertive and aggressive than I think you've represented it was intended to be here. And yet, here we are talking about an issue of insubordination with us trying to figure out what to do about it. In your opinion, if you were to still stay here, are you able to work with Mr. Pelletier?
I am. Yes, sir.
That's my only question.
So I, I just have one question for, for Mr. Ferris, and it's more of a, a legal question. This is sort of a factual question. But I think underlying some of what Mr. Diamond has asserted here is essentially that as the inspector of wires, he has sort of a right to do inspections and a right to exclude appointed assistant inspectors from doing inspections. And my question to you, Mr. Ferris, is whether that is true or not true or undetermined, kind of as a legal matter. I mean, is this a situation where, where as the appointed inspector of wires, he can effectively overrule a request from the Building Commissioner to a different appointed inspector to do an inspection?
We strongly reject that view. And our view is that, under the Building Commissioner statute, the Building Commissioner is the chief administrator of the town, of the department. He is the one that makes the assignments. He assigns the inspections. It is not the inspector of wires who makes the determination. And, and that's, that's, that's where he stands. And, and Mr. Diamond relies on the language, and I would like to point that out, the language of the statute where it says that the assistant wiring inspector can only replace him in his absence or disability. And, and you can, it's a broad language there, absence. Absence means that the supervisor says, "Hey, you're on, you're on, you're on leave for now until this issue is resolved," similar to what happened here. He wasn't suspended. He was told you were not to do any inspections until this issue is resolved. And, and then the assistant- And then the assistant inspector was placed in his role until the issue was resolved. So we, our view is that he does not have the exclusive authority and the unrestricted authority to do the inspections. And that the building commissioner is the one that makes the determination.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. So I think we're at the deliberation point of the hearing to discuss kind of what we think of the facts here. And obviously, there's been a lot of information conveyed. But I think that the two things we have to determine as a factual matter in this hearing is first, was Mr. Diamond's correspondence and statements back and forth to Mr. Pelletier effectively a resignation? If he was refusing to perform the job according to the existing compensation, is that effectively a resignation from that position, which is, I think, is this Madison Appeals Court decision, Davis versus the Town of Wareham suggests that it is, if we were to find that to be true. The second would be, you know, did Mr. Diamond engage in insubordination with respect to either directing or attempting to interfere with inspections occurring while this process was on? And then the third question is, pending the answers of the first two, what do we do about it? I think if we were to find that Mr. Diamond had resigned, we could determine whether we would reject that or accept a rescinding, you know, accept that he rescinded his resignation. And the same thing is true with respect to the insubordination. What is the, if we find that to be the case, what is the outcome? So I think those are the three questions that we are faced with. Peter, Gus, do you disagree with that formulation of what we have to decide?
I have a slightly different take on it because of the fact that it is an employee at will. And his employer has sought to terminate him and so that they can terminate him for any reason.
Okay. So that's the third question is, regardless of the first two, I guess here, at this point, we act for the employer. And so, we are the, effectively, the employer at this point.
I would agree, I agree with your original formulation. I'm looking at the notice of removal hearing. The statement is, your removal is being contemplated for the following reasons. So, yes, he's employee at will. But the fact that it's stated that way doesn't kind of specify if the first two automatically are answered, then that means removal is the solution. If I understand the request as it's stated here, it's being contemplated as opposed to, I don't necessarily read that as the sole solution. If we should determine something else is more, is appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Ferris, do you agree with that formulation of this decision?
Yes, I agree with that. And he is an at-will employee, so that would be, you know, he could be terminated for any reasons. But we do ask the board to find on those two issues specifically for the record and for the purpose of, you know, when it comes to issuing a decision, that the decision memorializes the vote taken by the board.
I understand. Mr. Diamond, I know you have a different view on what we ought to decide. But do you agree that those are the things that we are here to decide?
Well, you're here to decide on insubordination. And you heard testimony from the assistant that I did not direct him not to do inspections. I asked that the board consider that testimony. And I did not ask him not to do inspections. And as far as resignation, I daily sent an email to the department that I was available to do inspections. I don't see how that's resignation, sorry, sir.
No, I understand the substance of your position. It sounds like we're at least in agreement on what the questions are. There are different views on the answers. So Pete, we'll start with you, your views here, anything to discuss, questions for us?
So, sure. I guess I find this a very sad situation because I agree with Gus's comments that it's clear that Mr. Diamond is a longstanding employee who has served the town well. And it sounds like, from what he was describing in terms of the work for the last 15 months, that he's gone above and beyond and filled in where needed and done what's been asked. And so, I think that's admirable, and I thank you for that. It strikes me that this is a, it's a wage dispute that got out of hand and that it just escalated. And then lines were drawn and lines were apparently crossed. I guess I credit Mr. Cook's statement that, when he read us his text from Mr. Diamond, that that's in fact what the conversation was. I'm not sure if there was further, I didn't think to ask Mr. Cook if there was further conversation with Mr. Diamond about that because that seems to be one of the specific things that he contacted Mr. Cook after being asked not to contact him again. So I'm a little uncertain about that particular one in the notice of the removal hearing. And I'm not sure, actually, to be honest, about the first one either. You attempt to use your position to influence Assistant Wiring Inspector Billy Cook to not perform assignments. Based on what we heard, it didn't sound to me like he did. So the final one, the final issue there in that notice is your unwillingness to perform the duties of your position. And that seems to me, from the exchange of emails and memos and materials, that it does seem like that did come about. And so, that my sense is that it came about through that misunderstanding. I mean, the May 17 letter that you, memo that you wrote, Mr. Diamond, does read like a demand. And down at the bottom, it's got that language about the dates and by which you hoped that things would get resolved. But it does, it does read like a demand. So I guess ultimately, where I come down is that because Mr. Diamond is an at-will employee and my town administrator and my building inspector are asking to have him removed, that I would support those two people in their request.
But what about as to the specific findings with respect to the resignation and the insubordination?
The documents read like there is some insubordination going on. I don't, based on what Mr. Cook said, it didn't sound to me like he was instructed to not do inspections. And so, I don't see that as being insubordinate. I don't think that, but the rest of, in general, the documents read like you can't tell me what to do or that sort of thing. It sounds like there's just a lot of posturing going on where people, and Mr. Diamond was very forceful in putting forward his position. As I say, Mr. Diamond, I read it as your March, your May 17 one as a demand, not a request, even though it has those notes at the bottom that you have dates by which you hope it'll get accomplished. So we're asked to do two votes, find that the, that Mr. Diamond refused to accept the terms of employment and effectively resigned. I guess, you know, I could say yes to that, based on the exchange. I don't know about undermining, the second one, about undermining the authority of the building commissioner. That, he clearly didn't tell Mr. Cook to not do inspections, but the tenor of the exchange was such that it did tend to undermine the building inspector, the building commissioner, in my estimation.
Okay, Gus?
So Mr. Diamond is, there's four lawyers on the screen here as I look at it, and I'm the one who's not. And I've learned over the years that many times when I use common sense to interpret whether something is or isn't, you know, a fact or whatever, I've trained myself to expect at least a third of the time to learn from lawyers that I'm thinking about entirely wrong. But with that as an introduction, my view of the first question, did you resign? I don't think you did. And I will defer to lawyers who will cite court cases to prove that legally you have. I don't consider an employee, in the context of the compensation dispute that you were having with Mr. Pelletier, as a non-lawyer, having a boss basically put you on a schedule to have to confirm that you are willing to continue to work under the existing compensation and your failure to do that, but to say that you are available to do your job, for me, doesn't constitute a resignation. I am prepared to have four lawyers tell me I don't know what I'm talking about from a legal standpoint. But if I put myself in your shoes, I don't believe that's a resignation as you, in terms of how you would intend it. I think it was a negotiation around compensation, and you refused to go along with the kind of setup that said, well, confirm you're going to work, which means confirm you're withdrawing all your requests. So I'll throw that in your court as the non-lawyer. With regard to insubordination, whatever the intentions you may have had inside your head, and again, I think they were probably shaded by a desire to try to get some sort of negotiating leverage over Mr. Pelletier, the wording of the email that you sent to him on the 18th of May, in terms of what it literally said, and the tone of the email that you sent to him on the 17th of May with the five items, regardless of the last sentence, I think it's entirely reasonable for Mr. Pelletier to have assumed you were basically trying to overtake his authority or refuse to recognize his authority. And I don't think it's at all unreasonable for him to have viewed that as insubordinate actions. So the second question, I do think, for all intents and purposes, you are insubordinate. There may be reasons for it. My, so, those are the two questions you asked about. Those are my two answers. The only general comment I'll make is, given those two answers, I agree with Mr. Peterson. This is probably a compensation issue that got blown up into an issue that was bigger and more toxic than it probably should have. And so, I would at least look for the possibilities. Like Mr. Peterson, I think I'll look to the recommendations of the town administrator and the building inspector. But in light of our discussion here, I would hope, I would look for a confirmation of what those recommendations are. Because you appear to have been a good employee. You appear to be prepared to continue to be a good employee. And it doesn't feel good to me when the town turns its back on a good employee if there's a way to deal with situations without doing that.
Thank you.
All right. So I think on the two questions, I think, I'm going to try not to give too lawyerly an answer on either of them because I think we're here to determine what we, what the view of the facts are. I understand and appreciate the, I do believe that we would be justified in concluding that if Mr. Pelletier asks for a confirmation that if you're going to continue to do inspections under the current compensation, and you won't confirm that, and you respond with a set of demands, that he would be justified and the town administrator would be justified in concluding that you are not willing to proceed according to the current compensation. And that would create a potential risk and a potential dispute down the road about exactly what you were supposed to be paid for the inspections after the date of your memo. And I appreciate that, that the memo of the 17th, I'm presuming that you wrote that. And so, I'm not going to hold you to a lawyerly level of precision. But I certainly did not read the May 17 memo as a proposal. You know, I read all but the last section of it as a set of demands saying, this is how it's going to be, right? And what you say is, I have made the following determinations. And it includes certain procedural aspects with respect to permitting. It includes compensation as to one hour for the permit approval. It includes information about, or determinations about what hours or when you're going to be working and different aspects, when, how often you're going to be paid. And then it states that beginning in July that the compensation's going to go up. So I don't read any of that as a request. And I have no objection whatsoever to people making requests for more money, that is fine. So I don't really, but again, I'm not going to hold you to a lawyerly level of precision in that communication. But I don't think it's a fair reading that that's just a proposal. I think the last part of it, where you're asking for a review based on the number of hours you work, of whether your position would become a part-time benefited position, I think that's a proposal, to say, well, look on October 1st. We'll see how many hours I'm working. If I'm working more than 20 hours, then we'll turn it into a part-time position. So that's how I interpret that. And I think Mr. Pelletier and the town administrator were justified in finding that was effectively a resignation as of May 17. I also understand that objectively, I don't think you intended it as such. So we're in a fact-finding position, in that position, where I think that the recipients were justified in their interpretation. And objectively, I don't think you intended it to be that way. With respect to the second point on insubordination, I mean, I think it is a very big and serious word for what, I wish there were a word less serious than insubordination because it sounds like you are, you know, laying mines under the bridge or something behind the troops. I do think that, and again, you told Mr. Pelletier that you directed Mr. Cook not to do any inspections as you're available. I heard Mr. Cook's recitation of the text message. I take it as credible. However, you do seem to equate your availability with your entitlement to use inspections, to do inspections. And so, I don't know how I would construe, based on the custom and practice of the office, you stating you're available, whether that is essentially saying that you should be doing the inspections unless you defer some to Mr. Cook. So again, I don't want to, I credit what Mr. Cook says is truthful. I credit the text as accurate. But again, I don't know enough about the back and forth and what that means. And you certainly assert a number of times in the correspondence here that you are available. And that means you should be doing the inspections and not Mr. Cook. And so, that's one of the issues I have with that. So I do think that this, again, from Mr. Pelletier's perspective, from the town administrator's perspective, you stating that you've directed Mr. Cook not to do any inspections, even if that wasn't true because you hadn't done that, I understand why they concluded that you did. And then, in the context of this increasingly aggressive back and forth, how they concluded that you were essentially going to try to use your authority here to stop electoral inspections happening in Medfield until you got the compensation you wanted. And obviously, that's not an appropriate way to negotiate over compensation. People want more money, they can negotiate for it, but they have to keep doing their job in the meantime. So I understand Mr. Pelletier's position on all of that. And so, that's where I come down on those two. I think I would say, with respect to the resignation point, I don't want to find that, I think if we made a finding of resignation, I think that's a defensible finding. I think based on the totality of the evidence, I don't think he intended it as a resignation as well either. And so, I don't find that there was a resignation. With respect to the insubordination, I think the tone of the back and forth and the approach of the back and forth, I understand the position. And I agree that that was not an appropriate back and forth there. So now, the requests here, so those are the first two questions. So I think we have maybe one vote for it was a resignation and two, no. Is that right, on the first question?
On the, on...
Whether it was a resignation.
I think it was an effective resignation by refusing to comply with what the building commissioner asked him to comply with. He didn't, there was no answer that, I'm ready to go forward, basically.
Okay. So we have the two to one on that. And then, on the insubordination, we have two saying yes, that it was insubordination, and you were yes, insubordination?
Yep.
All right. So we have a finding of insubordination, no finding of an effective resignation as of the date of that communication. And then, the third question here is the question of remedy. And what do we do about it? Because Mr. Pelletier acknowledges in the communication that your work has been good, that you've done well for the town. You've done well for the town for 16 years. There's no suggestion that your work hasn't been any good. And you've obviously done your job for this town for a long time. I think Gus raises an important question, right? Recognizing that you're an at-will employee. At this point, if you were not removed from your position, how well will that department run? Are we going to be back to, are we going to be back to a week from now? Are we going to be back to, are we going to be back to a week from now or two weeks from now with, with similar tensions? And I think the, the second question to, to that is, and I don't know if we need to hear from, from Mr. Pelletier about this or not, but that is a concern that I have, because as I say, I don't fault Mr. Pelletier or the town administrator's reaction to your communications, right? There's nothing in your communications to them that sought to reformulate or set at ease the concerns they raised about the nature of the communications, right? You know, you, you could have easily sent an email to Mr. Cook and copied Mr. Pelletier saying, Bill, until this is sorted out, please go ahead and do all the inspections as directed by Mr. Pelletier, and you could have said, look, any inspections that I do in the interim, I'll do according to the current compensation, I'd like it reviewed. You didn't do that, and so I, I fully understand from administrative standpoint why Mr. Pelletier and the town administrator and the HR and, and town council reviewed this the, the way that they did, and I, I don't fault their actions at, at all in this process, because just the, the written correspondence you have with them, I think, does speak for itself, and I think they're fully justified in, in the findings, and obviously, we agree with their finding of, of insubordination. So as to the remedy, you know, I-
If I could just make-
Yeah.
-one other comment to this piece that you're talking about, the other thing that weighs on me, and clear, my position hasn't changed, I want to hear from Mr. Pelletier and the town administrator for sure, if we, if we don't just go with what we know right now. It's not lost on me that on January 25th, Mr. Pelletier requested that we appoint you as the wiring inspector, so there's a piece of me that says, after 16 years of good service in the town, something happened in four months that has put us where we are today. And I would like to be real sure that those things that happened in four months between the time you were appointed as the wiring inspector on the 25th of January, and today, effectively today, that what happened in everybody's careful, measured consideration justifies what's being contemplated here, which is a dismissal. That's not me trying to spin the ball, that's me really saying there's two people who've made a recommendation to us, and I would like to know that recommendation stands in the context of that circumstance.
Right, I guess the other question that I would have as well, given where we are, is, I mean, I think there's going to have to be some, I don't know if it's formal or so, if, if we have, if we decide on a sanction short of removal, there's going to have to be some kind of mediation process, and to, to kind of restore things, and I think some of that, and a lot of that, Mr. Diamond's going to have to come on your end, because I think that, I don't think this was prompted by, I don't believe for a second this was a retaliation for a request for more compensation. I mean, I don't, I don't think that assertion, and we're not being asked to find whether this is retaliation for requests for more compensation, but I don't think that is, there's nothing in this record to suggest that that's true. I think the responses of the town administrator and the building commissioner, given the nature of the communications, were understandable and reasonable, and I think what has persuaded me that, that at least as to the resignation point is not correct, is that I think to Gus's point, this, and Pete's point, this sort of got out of hand, right? And I think it mostly got out of hand on your end, Mr. Diamond, in this back and forth. And so I think in thinking about the remedy, and a remedy short of removal, we have to take that into account just from an administrative standpoint, because if you're going to stay in your position, you've got to be able to work productively under Mr. Pelletier's direction, and, you know, we, we can't have any recurrence of, of this kind of, of dispute or disputes of this nature. I mean, you're perfectly welcome to ask for more compensation should you stay, but I think, you know, the nature of this back and forth is, is troubling, and as I said, there is a finding here that there wasn't insubordination involved, which I think would justify a removal. And so the, the question that, that I would have, well, I mean, Gus, do we want to hear from town administrator and the building commissioner now, or do we want to hear from town council with respect to what our alternatives are, short of removal, as we consider what the, the sanction is going to be in light of, of the findings here?
I was going to suggest that, that we confirm our findings, that they're sufficient findings that we've made to, to warrant removal, and to ask the town administrator and the building commissioner to follow up after they've heard all of this, to determine whether or not they want to follow through on that, or whether they want to try to mend fences with Mr. Diamond and think that they can.
Mr. Ferris, I mean, within the, the context of this public hearing, if we were to, can we close this hearing without a, a finding of what the sanction is going to be with, with an instruction? We can memorialize the findings we have made on the two requested points, can we defer the remedy on those two points to give the building commissioner and the town administrator an opportunity to see if, if there's another resolution, or to suggest an alternative resolution, as, as Mr. Peterson suggests?
Well, if, if the, if the board members are willing to hear from the town administrator and the building commissioner, certainly they can do so. I think our view is clear that, that we're advocating for Mr. Diamond's removal, and we, we stated our position for, for doing so, and I think the board should, should vote on removal, and the town administrator and, and the building commissioner are clear on their position that they're, they're seeking that Mr. Diamond's removal as well. That, that's to answer your question.
Well, I guess my question is procedurally, do we have to reach a conclusion tonight on the remedy, or can we close the hearing at this point with the findings that we've made? And if we, if we did that, I do that with a request that I be authorized to work with, with town labor council to prepare formal findings consistent with what we found at the hearing, and defer the question of, of the remedy, to see if this can be resolved short of removal, because it sounds like, at least Gus and Pete, your view is you'd like to see this be revol, if possible, resolved short of removal. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I would also like to give the town administrator and, and Mr. Pelletier time to, to digest the, the information that's been garnered at this hearing, to see if it changes their opinions in any way. I mean, if it doesn't, for me, as I said before, I would support the town administrator and the, and the building commissioner in their request for removal.
I, I would agree. Pete, not that we necessarily need to do anything formal here, but I think you made the point that we had satisfied ourselves, we found things that would certainly warrant removal, if that's, you know, that we're satisfied, we have done that. I think the point here is what you just said, given what's been discussed here over this hearing, to the, if the building inspector and town administrator take that and, and take it into consideration, and then come back, either with a confirmation of their recommendation or a modified recommendation, that's what I would like to see. But certainly, I'm prepared to, to back the recommendation, it's just that it seems to me that our discussion here at least warrants some further consideration on their part.
Okay, so again, Mr. Ferris, I'm not hearing from you that we can't do that, in other words, we can't close the hearing at this point and then reopen it.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, yes, that, that's totally, you can do that. The one issue I do have with that, so Mr. Diamond has raised legal issue about the authority of him to perform inspections, and the longer this is delayed, the, the more that he has additional claims against the town, that he's owed wages for not doing inspections, although we disagree with that position, that, that's the position he is taking, and I would like to point out those, those, that, that potential liability or claims that, that you can bring forward against the town, and the event he is removed, not today, but at, at the next meeting.
So, Mr. Ferris, would, would it solve that, that concern? Because that's a concern of mine then, too, that if we do it this way, that it'll cost the town money down the, down the line if Mr. Diamond makes a claim against the town for those lost wages. Would it be possible to ask Mr. Diamond to waive those, and to release the town from those claims at this point, in, in light of the town going forward, as it's apparently thinking about going forward?
It, it is something that, that could be done until the board actually makes a vote on this, on this issue. Certainly, it will have to be, anything will have to be signed and written, so he, he won't, certainly won't be able to waive them at this hearing, but yes, that's certainly something that could be done.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about deferring this for a long period of time. I mean, I think we'd be deferring it until a second open hearing, which could happen, you know, later this week, potentially. But I, I think that, that I, I agree with Pete and Gus, I think we have sufficient findings to support the recommendation of removal, I think the, and I think if it's, if this is not a repairable situation, I'm prepared to support that recommendation as well. I think that, and as I said, I find a number of things about this quite troubling, and, you know, I'm willing to, in deference to, to Mr. Diamond's 16 years working for the town, take the more charitable interpretation of the record, rather than the less charitable interpretation of the record. But I do think it is an administrative question, because I do believe that the request for removal is, is substantiated, and as I said, I think that, that the resignation point is, I, I think that building commissioner and the town administrator were correct in how they interpreted the communications, and I think it's, it's, I, I just think that ultimately the, the balance is such that that was not what was intended or conveyed. So I would say then, I would entertain a motion to, to close this hearing at this point with the two findings that we have made, and I would also entertain a motion to authorize me to work with town labor council to prepare a summary of our findings consistent with this, that we'd submit for our review and approval as the formal decision of the board, and leave open the question of the remedy pending determination or review by the town administrator and the building commissioner. And I would, I would suggest that we post a, post a meeting for a resumption of this hearing either Friday afternoon or Monday, which would be the earliest we could, to consider the remedy in light of those findings, and at that point, perhaps the decision may be drafted, the decision may be drafted as well, and we could finalize that and insert the remedy. So we can look at this, everyone's schedules for that, for resumption of the public hearing.
I think it-
Mr. Chairman, if I could make just a closing statement before you close the hearing?
Briefly, yes.
I just want to say, once again, point out that I've worked for the town for over 16 years without any discipline in the future, in the past, and I, I hope the board would recognize that, that I've been a good employee, and that one discipline situation could not warrant my removal. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Murby, can you have a motion with respect to the-
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, could I just suggest that I always hear the town councils with hearings say that it's important to continue it to a date certain?
Okay.
So I think that would just make sense if we picked a date. I could do either Friday afternoon or Monday afternoon.
I would, for me, it would have to be later Friday, I have a deposition on Friday, I could go, so I could do it probably after 6 o'clock, between 6 and 8 on Friday.
Yeah, that works for me.
Works for me.
All right.
Maybe 6 o'clock.
Well, let's be safe, can we make it 7?
Sure.
So, Mr. Diamond, are you available at 7 o'clock on Friday?
Yes, sir.
All right, so let's, then, the motion would be to continue the hearing to 7:00 PM on Friday, and I will hope I will be back from downtown to be here at that point, but either way, I'll be able to participate via Zoom. Does that, 7 o'clock on Friday work for everybody else? You know, it's not an ideal time, but I don't think it'll be a long hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that works with, with our office.
Christine, does that work for you?
I'm available.
All right, so I'll entertain first a motion to authorize me to work with town labor council to prepare a draft of findings based on this hearing, based on what we've concluded, and then to continue the hearing until 7:00 PM on Friday, and we'll post that notice for that meeting tomorrow.
That was the second motion, I thought the first one was the findings themselves, no? You first had the find, the two findings were the first motion? I don't care.
Well, do we need a motion on the findings? I mean, we have, we have-
I've just listened to you, you called it out.
We have consensus on the findings, I think.
Okay, so we don't need anything on the findings?
I don't know that we need a motion specific to the findings.
All right.
But what we do is, I'll work with, a motion to authorize me to work with town council to draft a decision that will memorialize those findings, and then you can-
Okay. I move that we authorize Chairman Mark Cucci to work with town council to draft the findings that have been reached at this evening's hearing, with this hearing to be continued at 7:00 PM on Friday, June 4th.
I, I would second that with the suggestion that it be town labor council.
Town labor council.
Town labor council.
That's right.
So amended.
All right.
And with Mr. Peterson's second and amendment, Mr. Mark Cucci.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murby, aye.
Right, and then a motion to close the hearing.
A move that we close this hearing?
Oh, second.
Mr. Mark Cucci.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murby, aye.
All right, so we'll go directly then into the, what was to be the 7:00 PM meeting of the Medfield Board of Select. Mr. Diamond, thank you for your time this evening, we will see you on Friday. Mr. Ferris, Mr. Peliquin, thank you for your time as well. Mr. Cook, thank you for signing in as well, and thanks for everyone at home for sticking with us through an extended hearing. So I will read again for the second time the, the notice for this hearing pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order placing strict limitations on the number of people who can gather in any one place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being held via remote participation, and no in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted. However, yet every effort has been made to ensure that people who wish to view the proceedings while in progress may do so as provided in the order. As a reminder, persons wishing to view the meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the meeting notice. Because this is a remote hybrid meeting, all votes will be roll call votes, and as noted, the selectmen are here on the second floor of Town Hall, but no one else is permitted to attend the meeting, as everyone else is attending via Zoom. This meeting is continued to be recorded by video, and as this is the beginning of our standard meeting on this day after Memorial Day, we will take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. All right, thank you. This meeting has been called to order, so with, thanks for your patience, we'll begin with Kevin Price from Barry Dunn to discuss the Medfield Local Rapid Recovery Program findings from Phase 1, and to discuss next steps.
Good evening, thank, thank you for the opportunity to, to present this evening. My name is Kevin Price, I'm a senior manager with Barry Dunn, and I'm also serving as the lead, as facilitator for the towns' project, the Local Rapid Recovery Plan. So for this evening, I have a brief update to provide, I'm going to start off with some high-level project background, discuss some of, or summarize some of the work performed through the first phase of this project, look at some of the results from the first phase, and then discuss some of the upcoming project activities, and then moving towards the, that update, we'll look for any discussion or input that the, the board or participants may have as we shift into the next phase of the project, which I will describe in just a moment. So in December of 2020, the town submitted an application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, to take part in the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program. A total of 119 communities in Massachusetts are part of this program. In January of this year, Barry Dunn submitted an application to serve as a plant facilitator, providing technical assistance for the town through this program, and in February, we were- And in February, we were matched with the town of Medfield. This project has three phases. The first is a current state diagnostic phase, which started in March. That concludes formally with this presentation this evening. Also starting this evening, we jump into Phase 2, which is where we look at project recommendations that will take us through mid-July. Starting in mid-July, we will pick off Phase 3, which is development of a final rapid recovery plan, which will encapsulate the items from Phase 1, diagnostic phase, and build upon the projects identified in Phase 2. I will note that there is a website that DHCD created specific to the program that has a lot of additional materials and information on the website for those interested. So just very briefly, the study area, also referred to as Commercial District by DHCD in some communications, was identified as part of the town application in December. As you can see, this is not a town-wide project. It is focused on a particular study area in town or referred to as Commercial District in the survey, which is also included in the agenda packet. So Phase 1, some of the key items around the work performed on April 14th. Myself and three others from the Barry Dunn team conducted a site visit of the study area. We also met with the Local Rapid Recovery Plan Working Group to collect information on the physical environment and business environment. So this was a walking visit of the study area where we collected information required by DHCD. First phase focused on three primary questions. The first is how conducive is the physical environment to meeting the needs and expectations of businesses and customers? Second, who are the customers of businesses in the study area? And third, what are the impacts of COVID-19 on businesses in the study area? Following our site visit, we spent the next month doing some follow-up activities and conducting research to obtain some additional pieces of information, and we submitted the requested information to DHCD on May 14th. Part of that submission included data for 69 indicators. This included information that the Barry Dunn team collected through our site visit, as well as information collected from third-party data sources, sources such as MassDOT or Ed Esri. And so this included, but was not limited to, things like average daily vehicular traffic, so in 2019 compared to 2021, calculating the total open or public space in the study area, looking at the total resident population within the study area, the total number of workforce employees, total number of businesses, total number of storefronts, and also the total number of vacant storefronts. These are just the sampling of the types of indicators that DHCD was interested in. This included a mix of items that our team collected through our site visit and physical counts. That would include things like number of businesses, number of storefronts, information on the total resident population and workforce and vehicular traffic counts came from MassDOT and Esri's Business Analyst Project. Other component of the assessment of, that was included as part of the first phase was an evaluation or a grading of 11 public and private realm areas or items. So these were items that were defined by DHCD, and we were provided a rubric and guiding principles to determine a grade for each of these items. So you can see there were five items related to the public realm and six items related to private realm. You can see that the public realm items had a grade of B, private realm items had a B with window and awning, excuse me, window and signage receiving an A grading based on the definition provided by DHCD. In parallel with our site visit and follow-up research, there was an overall business survey conducted by an additional, separate consulting firm, FinePoint, who was contracted by DHCD to assist and provide overall guidance. So they issued a survey to all 119 communities participating in the program. So the survey results that were included is part of this packet. That was the same survey that was issued to all communities participating in the program. And then what was done with the help of town staff was physical distribution of flyers requesting completion of the survey. A screenshot of that is included on this slide. We had 26 businesses in the study area respond to the survey. There were several components of that survey. I've highlighted a few items that I thought were likely to be of greatest interest. The survey in the packet contains additional detail and more questions. The first item around impact of COVID-19, 88% of businesses reported being impacted. 50% reported operating at reduced hours capacity or being temporarily closed. 77% of businesses reported generating less revenue in 2020 than they did in 2019. And for 35% of businesses, that revenue declined by 25%. Two other items that were included in the business survey that I've highlighted here were related to satisfaction with the Commercial District and regulatory environment obstacles. So there were predefined elements that were provided, and respondents were asked to indicate their satisfaction on a scale going from very dissatisfied to very satisfied. The town felt, the study area felt and was satisfied. It's an average score for all of the areas that were included in that survey. And in response to the question on regulatory environment obstacles, 38% of businesses indicated that they did experience obstacle. There were the predefined lists that businesses were able to select to indicate what obstacles they felt they were up against, and the top three that were identified included signage regulations, licensing or permitting regulations, and parking regulations. The final item I wanted to highlight in the business survey results is the one that's forward-looking, that is a nice tie to what I would look at Phase 2 and Phase 3. So as part of the survey, businesses were also asked to provide input on possible strategies to include physical environment, atmosphere, and access. The top three strategies that received the highest average level of importance included improvement or development of public spaces and seating areas, changes in public parking availability, improvements of street skates and sidewalk. And then the second question related to that was by input on possible strategies related to customer and business attraction or retention. I highlighted the four items that had the highest level, average level of importance, including more cultural events or activities, including marketing strategies, opportunities for outdoor dining and selling, and recruitment programs to attract additional businesses. Where we go from here, and we are now kicking off the second phase, which is where we will be identifying projects to address some of the challenges that I've identified in the first phase. This will include identifying projects based on input that's been received to date, input that we may collect at the end of this presentation, as well as subsequent activities to collect input from the business community. Once we have our projects identified, we will take advantage of DHCD's subject matter experts that they've provided. So in addition to the facilitator role that I am serving as the lead for, for the town, there's also a pool of subject matter experts ranging from areas around, you know, marketing strategy, parking, other improvement, public realm, private realm improvements, regulatory obstacle improvements that we will have access to as part of the second phase. And then further out, second half of July and August, that's when we'll look to develop the final plan, and that will also provide an opportunity for input from, from this group and the public and the business community. So the question that I have for this group, and this is my last slide, is as we shift to the project identification phase and process, are there any specific suggestions or inputs that you would have that we should take under advisement or consideration at this time?
Pete?
I don't know how important it is, but your plan left out Basil's Restaurant, the delineation of the area that was in your study. Basil's Restaurant is a hugely important restaurant in the town of Medfield, so I would include that in your area of study. It's just off to the, it's up Frere Street. It's in a residential area. If you move your cursor to the left, you'll be on it. Right there, yeah, that's their parking lot, the buildings across the street. I was curious as to the grade ranges. You gave us grades, but does it go A to F, or what does it do?
Yep. So the, the grade ranges were A, B, C, or fail. Fail or not applicable. So these were predefined. For example, for road beds and crosswalks, to obtain an A, you would have needed to have pretty much dedicated bike lanes throughout the entire study area. A grade of C for road beds and crosswalks would have meant that it was hazardous to all users. So B would where the study area fell for that one. Other items around, you know, trees and street benches, you know, they were, they were existing, but they were not at the level that was defined by DHCD as of receiving an A, which would involve very prevalent throughout the entire study area.
May I ask a question? I don't mean to interrupt Pete's questioning period, but if a C is hazardous to all users, like what do you need to get an F? Like, does it have to literally be on fire?
No, no crosswalks entirely. The, the grades in the rubric that were provided, that was provided by DHCD, and so we served as kind of our team based on our physical assessment and reviewed it with the town team prior to submission. And we're also serving as a facilitator for two other communities, and so we have some additional perspective on looking at that rubric from other communities that are part of it.
Pete, further questions?
It sounds like they didn't find the alligators that we have in Meeting House pod.
Yeah. Further questions, Pete?
26 responses to the survey. That sounds like a very low response rate.
Yeah. So there were, I believe, 97 flyers that were distributed to businesses. So the response rate was slightly over 25%. That, that is a little bit lower than what we've seen, you know, about a 30, 33% response rate. It was a relatively short window of time between when the survey was available. The other businesses that were not respond, did not respond, will still be invited to include additional input as we go through the project process. That percentage is comparable to the other communities that we're working with.
Mr. Price, was it a physical flyer that was delivered to a, a physical location, or was it an email?
There was a, a physical flyer that was delivered, and I believe there was also some communication via email. Sarah at the town assisted with, with that.
Okay. Yep. Subject matter experts, do we get to pick those?
There's a matching process, so we will fill out a request form, which outlines the, the projects and background, the source that led to the project, and justification, but DHCD will make that decision on who is, we are paired up with.
Yeah. But if we, but if we determine that our signage is our biggest issue, can, can we then make sure that we get paired with a signage expert?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If we pair the topics and areas of expertise, we wouldn't have the ability to request a specific individual.
No, 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 but, but we get to pick the topics, basically.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Pete? No. Gus?
Mostly, I think I have questions. The, one of the early slides you had showed, like, 88% of the businesses have indicated that they're affected by COVID. One that had all, yeah, that one there. I was just curious how that profile looks against other towns that you've worked with in terms of where, you know, have we come out right in the middle? Have we done better than some, or how do we react to those percentages?
So for the two others, I don't know offhand. I can certainly follow up to see where the percentages were. I recall that one being pretty comparable, you know, vast majority reported impact, but not quite 100%. We have not received, and I'm not, certainly will receive, a, a total report. We received a report specifically with the town, but I can certainly see if there's an opportunity to receive a full report, which would allow you to do some better comparisons.
Okay. What caught my attention on one of these slides was, there was one that said we had three vacant storefronts, and every time I go to Wellesley Square, I get pretty sobered to look at the number of empty stores there. So I, just in terms of counting your blessings, it seems like perhaps we fared a little better than some, even though we've got a smaller commercial base to start with. So I just wondered.
Yep.
Second, just general observation I had, I went back, I went through the slides that you had that also had the more detailed charts in them, and for instance, the, the issue around business satisfaction, you talked about 38%, you know, had issues. I think we need to, and I'm not trying to trivialize any issues or anything we can do, but I, I read that and said, well, 62% thought we didn't have any issues, so nearly 2/3 of our businesses were relatively satisfied with things. 1/3 plus had issues. That was, I actually took that as good news because I think our town's been trying pretty hard this past year to, to unloosen any barriers or obstacles that have been in the way. I, I was curious, at some point, I would be curious to know more about the details of the issues like licensing or permitting regulations for the, I think it said 19% called those out, and I would just like to understand them in order to be evaluating whether it's that we have stupid regulations or whether it's people that wished we didn't regulate them at all. So that was just a, a reaction. On the slides that you had that had the red, yellow, you know, red, orange, yellow, green, light green, green, on the, the ones about what people liked, I think this is the A and B scores that you had there, I noted that basically every one of those, we were in the green zone, which I took, again, I try to be Pollyanna here, but I took, I want to make sure we don't fix things that aren't broke just to find something to do, I guess is what I'm saying. And I found those things, there were a number, they were all in the green zone. And then what was interesting, Pete, to me as well, is the, the other slides, that it's the business input related to possible strategies, all of those arrows were in the yellow neutral, which was kind of, there's a couple that are close to the orange, so if anything, it was almost like, relatively speaking, don't do that. But I was struck by how all the strategies, the sentiment was sort of a neutral, neither, neither really think you need to do it or really don't think you shouldn't do it. And again, I'm not trying to say, so let's not do anything. I just found that in terms of kind of anchoring to ground truth, I found those kind of interesting, that they were, you know, we don't have any brush fires to put out, it's just if we can find things to do better, that would be a good thing.
That was, I would agree, that, that takeaway. You know, there was nothing that was in, in the green that, that said, you know, there were, are still a lot of businesses that we do want to hear from. And so this survey was administered by DHCD, another consultant. We are planning to have another forum to provide continuous input through this, using a collaboration pool with some additional survey questions and ways to submit items, and we will make that push again for the, you know, the larger businesses. And so I think it's important to look at these because it's a piece of input that we wouldn't have otherwise, but at the same time, I'm going to think was pointed out in the, the question I saw, that, you know, a 38% is still, is 10 businesses that indicated that. And so it's, it's a small portion of those, so we, we will look to dive into a little more. I think what this does give us is an ability to focus on maybe getting more detail on some of the, the regulations, because these were predefined options. It was to pick the, you know, multiple choice, pick these lists, not getting into the next level of what specific, you know, would you change? And then if these aren't the possible strategies to improve, my guess is that some of these still have might, would be very important to them that just didn't follow for one of the six predefined strategies.
The only other two points I have, I, I appreciate Pete bringing up Basil as being a business that ought to be in this, in this, and it seems like it would be easy to do. It's right on the border of what you bounded. The only other, the only other input I had is that with regard to parking issues, that Sarah Repose can certainly put you in touch with the past parking study we've done. So we, parking always comes up, and every time we look at it closely, it's like, well, it's not really a problem, it's just that people have to walk three blocks. And so at the very least, don't, you know, make sure that you've considered what we already know about parking and looking at that.
And that, that parking study was provided to us, and was part of some of the materials that we've reviewed to get a understanding of the, the current market.
That's all I have.
Nothing for me. Christine, anything? Great. Any?
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Price. Anything else you need from us?
No, at this point, we will, I'll work with Sarah, see if there's an opportunity to provide an update later on in the project. And if you reach out to her, if there's a need to, you know, connect separately, I'm happy to connect if you have some additional thoughts that you'd like to share or point you to a, a channel to provide those. And yeah, that's everything. I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is with Gene Minio of the Cultural Alliance of Medfield, who requests use of the Medfield State Hospital for CAM to host a reception for the mural installation by artist Cedric "Vice" One Douglas, called "The Healing Properties of Art and Nature," on Monday, June 7, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the mural located on building number 10.
I think it's too late. I went a couple days ago, and the mural's already there.
Yeah, so that was pretty much all the details, Mike. Thank you. We're looking to host it just right in front of the mural on the lawn that's there. to host it just right in front of the mural on the, the lawn that's there. Just be an hour or so, some brief remarks. We have a little bit of live music from Annie Costello, who's a teacher in town, and some of her students. That's about it.
And it's just a request to use the, the area there?
Correct.
Okay. Pete, any questions?
No.
Gus, any questions?
I assume you're inviting Cedric to be there?
Yes, he'll be there.
Okay. He did a great job. You did a great job, but he did a great job.
Yeah. I agree. Even in the pouring rain on Sunday, it looked fantastic. So that's great. All right. So we have a motion?
I move that we approve Cultural Alliance of Medfield's request to use the Medfield State Hospital for CAM to host a reception for the mural installation by artist Cedric Weiss-Wan Douglas, called "The Healing Properties of Art and Nature," on Monday, June seventh, 2021, at seven PM at the mural located on building number ten. That is the correct preposition.
Second.
Mr. Markucci?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes?
Great. Thank you, Gene. Good luck with the reception.
See you there.
All right. Next up, COVID-19 status update. Christine?
I have no COVID-19 status update, other than to tell you that we have started to transition our municipal buildings to follow the CDC mask guidance. So we ask that people who are vaccinated can be masked at the town hall, but if you have not been, we would request that you wear a mask when visiting us.
Christine, minor, a minor administrative thing, I should have just mentioned it. It didn't have to be online. We have mask signs still up at the state hospital. I assume we'll take those down?
We'll take those down.
Okay.
Yeah. We ju, we just started taking the ones down at the town hall. We'll, we'll make our way around.
Okay, great.
Thank you. All right. Federal funds update and discussion, CARES, FEMA, and American Rescue Plan Act.
Unfortunately, I don't have much to update you since last Tuesday. I am concerned that we need to start coming up with, although we have two years to spend the money, I think we need to start developing our spending plan. We've already started to have some of those discussions regarding some of the capital budget. As we know, based on the guidance from Treasury, we are waiting for our DOR guidance from Massachusetts on what will count as lost revenue. And we know that a lot of what we're going to be authorized to spend that money on will come from those lost revenue calculations. So we're waiting on the DOR for that. My concern as we start to come up with spending guidance, and we've been talking internally, is that we need to get a decision on the Norfolk County money, because I think your approach to spending this will be different if you only have 1.3 million versus 3.8 if we have the county money. So we're hoping to move forward and have a resolution with the county by your next meeting, or at least have a, a plan in place for what we will ask the county to do at your June fifteenth meeting. And I should have a letter at that time prepared for you to send to them requesting that that two and a half million come directly to the town of Medfield.
Great. Thank you. Pete, anything?
Uh, no.
Gus?
Nope.
All right. Next, review and discuss the Board of Selectmen, Board Committee Structure, Policy, and Appointment Policy. This is the policy originally adopted in 2018, in an effort to kind of rationalize our overall committee structure, keep up to date on what committees are doing, which committees need to have new members, which committees need to cease to exist, and the like. And then just so that we're kind of know what, we know what's going on, a reminder to committees to, to get their minutes in and the rest. And then I think we're also going to discuss whether we need a, a sort of enhancement to the policy that will discuss how we go about appointing committee members. And that would be a new addition to the policy if we did something like that. So Christine, anything in specific on this from you?
A couple of things. I would like you to review the questions that you asked. I see this as, as two parts. So the first part would be to review the questions that we asked the committees, if there's anything new you would like to add. I know last year we added whether or not members of the committee were Medfield residents. But if there's anything else we'd like to add before we send that out, we would appreciate that. And then I circulated today, so it was not included in the packet, so it won't come up until the fifteenth, is the policy on how we appoint our town boards and committees. And nothing has changed on how we do it. We're just formalizing that procedure. As we've seen across the board, it works better for all of us when we have these policies and procedures in writing.
And Christine, the questions you're asking about, the, you included both the original questionnaire and the new 2020 Google Forms questionnaire. I didn't go through the questions to audit them. Are the questions on the Google Form the exact same ones that are on the existing questionnaire?
They're exactly the same. We did add last year whether or not committee members were Medfield residents. But that was the only new, that's the only difference.
In other words, if we review the Google Forms version of this, we've done our job. Okay, that's all I needed to know.
It seems to me like one of the things we ought to add to it is just a, a reference, a cross-reference to the capital budget policy. And we, we have a requested budget for the coming fiscal year, but to the extent there are committees, this came up with the Energy Committee this year with respect to the, their solar installation, to the extent that committees have an interest in some sort of capital project, to refer them and remind them of the capital budget process, and I think probably to encourage committees that any capital projects they're going to submit be submitted in conjunction with the town department as part of that town department's capital budget. And I think to the extent that a committee wants to make a capital budget request that's not going to be in conjunction with a town department request, we ought to have a separate conversation about that. It doesn't necessarily mean the town department has to support it. I think it would be perfectly fine for a town department who is responsible for overseeing some sort of capital project to submit it with their budget, with the view that the department head doesn't favor it, but a committee does, and that the capital budget, and the warrant committee, and everybody else sort that out. But it is, I think, more organized if we can have everything kind of going through that process, and just as a reminder to committees that, that, of what the policy is on, on capital projects, and that if they're thinking about capital projects, they have to be thinking in five-year terms, and not, you know, next year, or next month, or what have you. That's the only thing that I noticed for an addition. Peter, Gus, any, any additions or subtractions to the questions?
Yeah, I don't have a response.
I just would mention that I think it's just one more thing for committee members who are volunteering their time to do. And so we should try to keep it as simple as possible. And, and maybe if they, if they fill it out one year, and, and we give them the Google Form, they can maybe the next year, just very simply cut and paste from the prior year, so that it'll be less onerous on our, on our committee volunteers.
Yeah. That's fine. I think that's fine. Do we have that technical capability, Christine?
If we have Google Docs, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's a good idea.
That's a great idea to get it into Google Docs. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, that's good. And then I think just on the list of committees, we've got the Exhibit A, the Exhibit A committees, the, the ones that are appointed by us versus the ones that are, we should just review them, because some of these committees, I think, have been dismissed. So we should up, refresh the Exhibit A and the Exhibit B to make sure that they're all still in existence.
Yeah.
We have some recommendations on that as well, that we'll make at your June fifteenth meeting.
Okay. So I think, I think with that, with, just with the addition of the capital note, I think this is probably good to go out. Is that, we agree on that?
Yep.
All right. So, all right. What's next? Oh, the Senior Tax Workoff Program. So earlier this year, or maybe late last year, in light of the restrictions, the COVID restrictions, we had taken a vote to limit the participation in the Senior Tax Workoff Program. I think we, did we limit it to fifty, Christie, Christine?
On this go-around, we limited it to thirty.
Thirty.
We had fifty participants in the lottery.
Okay, and, and, yeah, to be chose?
The reason why we had limited it was because it was such, it was less than half the time that we would normally run the program. And we sometimes run into an issue where the seniors cannot complete their hours. So we did not want to run into an issue where we did last year, where people were not able to complete their time.
Okay. And so I, I, I put this on the agenda. I got an email, a note, oh, last week from Nancy Irwin on behalf of the swap volunteers, about whether we would reconsider the, the limitations we had, and open it up to the additional people who had applied. And so I, I don't necessarily have a view on it one way or the other, but I thought we should just discuss it, given the request that came in, and the changing COVID circumstances, and so that we could talk about what the practicalities would be, if it's even really an option. Because if it's still, if they're still going to be impossible for people to get the hours, then we can't, we can't do it. As I, Christine, you can correct me if I'm wrong. If they, if they're in the program and they can't get the hours, do we end up owing unemployment?
They do have the ability to apply for unemployment.
Yeah.
We have a, a promise of work, and if we cannot not deliver on that, then they do have that option.
Right. So I guess the initial question is, is, is there some possibility of being able to accommodate a larger group of people in the program? And then if so, do we want to try to do that, and how would we do that? So what about the practicalities? Is there, is it physically possible to do, or are we still in a position where we're just unlikely to be able to accommodate everybody?
I would defer to, Roberta Lynch is here this evening. I would defer to Roberta on, actually, she's already raised her hand, on whether or not they would be able to fill all of those positions.
Okay.
Hi, Roberta. One second. Hi.
Hi, Roberta.
Yeah, Roberta.
I'm at a bad location in my house, but, okay, I think that's better. Yep. So, yeah, I, you know, I came before the Board of Selectmen on March thirtieth, and we were, you know, the pandemic was still pretty intense, although vaccinations were happening. And so I proposed, instead of not running it at all this year, that we do the half, half the people, half the year. So the, Yvonne likes to have, and Georgia likes to have, the tax workoff wrapped up right around October fifteenth, maybe a week or two after, if we have some stragglers, so that they can get all their paperwork, what they have to do for the program. So I thought it was pretty reasonable to go with the half the people, half the, half the hours, and you all voted for that. We did hold our lottery on May nineteenth, and we had fifty participants. So we pulled the thirty names, and then we have the twenty people who are on the waitlist. And part of me is concerned that, I understand the letter that came in was after the lottery, when the person who wrote the letter wasn't included in the lottery. She's second on the waitlist. So I don't know, you know, I don't know if that's the reason why, because she didn't make the lottery. I don't know what the reason is. But I'm very comfortable keeping it as it is. I have, we have thirty people. They're all placed in positions except for one person. And then in the fall, come the end of October, we'll be doing another lottery for the full amount of people, sixty-five people, for the thousand dollars. So.
Pete, any questions?
No.
Gus, any questions?
Sounds like we keep it the way it is.
Yeah. So, so I appreciate Nancy raising the issue. I appreciate the clarification, Roberta. I think the way it's shaken out, we probably should stick with what we did originally, because I, I suspect there may be people who, if there were more spots, might have put in for the lottery.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
And so I think that-
Because usually we have eighty people, eighty-three, and maybe more, you know, taxes going up, will apply for it. And we've had the lottery since 2003. So this isn't something that's just happened over the last few years. This has been going on for a very long time.
Yep. No, understood. So I just wanted, it was raised. I wanted to discuss it. I think we understand it. So I think we're going to stick with where we are. So, Roberta, thank you very much. Thanks, Christine.
Yep. Thank you.
Next item is to discuss the creation of an appointment process for the study committee to review the school building committee bylaw that was the subject of the article at town meeting. I just wanted to bring you up to speed. I spoke to Chris Potts, the sponsor of the article, and to Scott McDermott. And it was the request of the, of the sponsors that the moderator appoint this committee, because the recommendation of the article is that the moderator would appoint future committees, building committees, that's the, the article's recommendation. And so I spoke to Scott, and Scott is, is willing to appoint this committee. And so I just wanted to raise it with the two of you to see either if you had, either of you had an issue with that, or wanted to do it differently, just to, to bring you up to speed on those discussions. And I think the, the timing that we discussed was that the committee would do its work with an eye towards the annual town meeting next year for the bylaw. So it's not, not an urgent matter. Scott has a couple of other appointments to do as well, but that's just the conversation I've had. So I throw it out there to the two of you for, for any discussion, questions, objections.
So it's the town moderator who's appointing this committee that's looking at the bylaws as opposed to the issue around the town moderator appointing members of a school building committee?
Correct.
Okay. The only, I guess, I guess two issues come to mind for me. Number one, given, well, no, this is okay, because this is the committee that's looking at the bylaws. That's fine. I only have one issue. The issue is a timing issue. I think it won't, if Scott's looking at having this committee formed, or being formed at the next annual town meeting?
No, that the committee would be formed at some point with enough time to do its work, to present a proposed bylaw to the next town meeting.
Okay. So the only question that I have on this has to do, so I think that's okay. The only question I have is, this committee is not likely to interfere with the town's ability to complete the school building project, even if we do not get funding, approval for funding next fall, first, first go-around?
No, it's, it's directed to the future, a future building committee.
That's the only question.
Yeah. It would be a bylaw voted on at town meeting in May of 2022, and then there's the ninety-day review period from the Attorney General's office. So it wouldn't even take effect until, you know, that should sum up some time. So it would be a-
That's, that was my only, yeah, sorry.
Pete, any questions issued?
No.
All right. So we'll, Scott's got another job to do. Next is to approve the Medfield Meadows LLC transfer request. This had come up at our meeting last week, and Gus had raised a concern about making sure that the transfer won't affect the ability of the owners to comply with their obligations under the, the plan there, particularly with respect to concerns that have been raised about the gate with the neighborhood. I, I think that's been resolved. Mark, I know you've had some correspondence with counsel for Medfield Meadows eighteen A LLC about this?
Yes. Per your request, I reached out to the attorney who was doing the paperwork. And in response, the project manager, who apparently is staying the same, got involved and had some back and forth with Gary Pelletier, the building commissioner, made a proposal, which Gary was comfortable with, which basically adds some attachments, as I understand, to that gate, so that it makes it difficult, if not impossible, for pedestrians to simply go under or around or whatever.
So I, I have some questions, Mark, because I don't think this does resolve the issue at all. Was Gary Pelletier authorized to speak on behalf of the neighbors and the commitments that were made to the neighbors when this development went through, and make and negotiate this agreement on behalf of those neighbors' interests?
Mr. Chair, please interrupt for one moment. Paul McGovern is here from Medfield Meadows, in case you have a question for him, Gus.
Yes, I do.
I thought you might be. So let me firm a call.
So I saw, I saw those, I saw that what you, what was forwarded to me from Gary, that looks to be like a gate that looks like the, what, the transfer station gate, if I understood it correctly.
That's certainly not one that a pedestrian-
That's not a pedestrian-proof gate. But, but more importantly, let me, Paul, well, thanks for coming.
Aye.
I have, I, I wound up digging into this a little bit.
Yep.
And I've actually been over there to take a look at the site. You have a white plastic fence that covers about half of the property line. It ends at where the gate that's going to be put in there is going to go. If you, if you're familiar with what I'm talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, a hundred percent familiar. Yeah, so the, the requirements on our project plans show, which is what the approved plans are, do not call for a pedestrian-proof gate at that location. What they call for is a barrier, because it has to be, it has to remain as emergency access for fire trucks and stuff like that. I wasn't involved in the initial planning stages of it. I'm the, the project manager. But there is nothing on the approved plans about a pedestrian gate for that.
So that's, that's a huge problem. I would suggest that you take a look at the meeting minutes of the zoning Board of Appeals from back in December 2018 and January of 2019. There was a commit, there was a statement made there by John Kelly, that there was a question that came up and asked about what kind of a fence would be put there. And the issue is, would it be a stockade fence or a white plastic fence? And apparently the neighbors were told, well, you can have what you want, shouldn't be any problem. And so quite, quite logically, they- And so quite logically, they preferred the white plastic fence that kind of continues what you already have. That's point one. Point two is a joint project in town issue. Apparently, the original plan for that fence had a jog that basically moved the gate, I don't know, eight or 10 feet closer to the driveway for Medfield Meadows. The reason for that, and I don't even know if this is a really good reason, but the reason for that was when Joseph Pace Road gets plowed, the snow goes all the way up to the end of the road, and there would be nowhere to put it unless there was free space at the end of the road for the snow. There apparently was-
That's a fairly major concern, because the reason for this gate in any event is as a second means of access to the property in the event of a fire or something like that.
Exactly. And that's, that's, that's an important question as well. So I'm not sure that the jog holds, although the town at least will have an issue about snow removal on Joseph Pace Road. Christine knows that and is talking to Mo Guley about what the plan is there, because I think the past practice has been to just push it to the end of the road and leave it there. But then that also represents-
Past practice, sorry for interrupting you, but past practice, from what I have seen, has been to push it onto Medfield Meadows property. In fact, prior to us even moving on site, they had taken down a section of the boundary fence, so that they could shove it in onto the site.
Right. So my point here isn't to necessarily demand a jog there. My point is that there seem to have been some issues that were discussed early in this process, and there were commitments made by the developer to the neighbors of that, of the community there, about what would happen. And suddenly now, they're not there. And yet, the neighbors were never, they were, it was a commitment that was made, and then it evaporated. So it may be that it's a straight fence, in which case, the town has an issue about what to do on the town side of that fence. And then Medfield Meadows has an issue around how you're going to plow the driveway, because by the same token, you can't just push the snow to the, to the gate when you're plowing the driveway. So it's a, it's a two-sided issue you need to be aware of. Maybe you aren't.
Absolutely. We're definitely aware of it on our side. I'm not sure that the town on the other side, because even this winter, when it was inactive and it lived in property, there was snow there on a regular basis.
Right, right.
We are prepared to do whatever the neighbors are looking for us to do. We have already said that. We came up with a suggestion of a gate and a fence. We are, we can meet with them. And in fact, we've already, the fence that was originally called for, and the town requirements only allow for a six-foot-high fence. At the request of the neighbors, we went before the ZBA to put up an eight-foot-high fence. So, you know, we're not trying to ride roughshod over them, but if they want, if they want something there, we're prepared to do it.
I pre, that was the confirmation I'm looking for. I, what I, obviously, it's important to speak to the neighbors. I've spoken to some, but I don't even know if they speak for all. As I just look at it aesthetically, both from their standpoint and from your standpoint, it seems to me that you would want to continue the white plastic fence that already goes halfway down the property line to where the gate would go. You would want to just continue that on down to where the, there's a black wire fence that I think DPW put up, that's in between your project and the DPW grounds.
We actually put that up as well, at the request of the DPW.
Okay. Well, that one's fine. It's just that right now, there's half a-
Well, there is a fence returning all the way along the other house at the end of that driveway. So we were continuing that fence back to the white. The reason the white fence is there is because it's immediately behind and directly between houses that are kind of overlooking each other.
That's fine. What do you, what do you- I don't want to put you on the spot. I'm going to put you on the spot, but I don't feel like I'm, I don't want to nail you on the spot. Would it be reasonable for you to look at extending that white fence down to the DPW fence? And then there would be an appropriate white gate there. But would it be reasonable for you to do that if the, I think that the neighbors would be happy with that. It seemed to me like it wasn't a terrible thing for you to have to do. Is that something that would be reasonable for you to do?
Yes. We can do that.
Okay. Then I'll look, I'll look for you to talk to the neighbors, but with that public confirmation that if that would be the thing they would like, that you're prepared to do that.
If they're, if that's what they're requiring, then we, the issue with that is, we won't be able to jog it back in, because there's a fairly steep hill back in the way.
Yep.
So we can't bring it back up the hill with any level of, with any grade ease, and it would look very odd as well.
And so Chris-
We're prepared to do whatever. It's obviously going to be more expensive, but we were prepared to do whatever it is that they want us to do at that location. And like I said, we've already done, you know, we've tried to appease some of the concerns with the higher fence.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, does the fire chief need to be involved in this discussion? Is that going to affect the ability of that gate to function in an emergency?
It's gate.
No matter what gate we put there, we will have to, it will have to be lockable, or it will have to be functioning in an emergency.
It's probably appropriate to check with the chief, but I think what I had heard, I think he had a minimal requirement, just to make sure it was something the fire truck could make it through, so. Chris, and Christine, given Mr. McGovern's comment, it kind of makes sense to me, again, aesthetically, that that jog would make the fence ugly on both sides. So it makes sense it would be a straight fence. The only issue is that I think DPW needs to have a good plan for how it, how it plows Joseph Pace Road, because there's no place to put the, and to Mr. McGovern's point, it seemed to me that putting the snow there, right at the gate on an emergency access road, doesn't make a lot of sense on either side of the gate. So that's the one thing that's on us to figure out, make sure we've got the procedure right there.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Those are my questions. I appreciate your flexibility on that, Mr. McGovern. I think that's an issue-
This is an important issue for us to get resolved, because we can't close on any of the properties, including the affordables, until this gets resolved, and we do have, we are ready to close on some of them.
With that clarification, I'm, I'm good to go on the-
Anything, Pete?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we, I've got to make sure I got the right one here. I move that we approve Medfield Meadows LLC ownership transfer request?
Second.
And sign it, I think is the second one. Mr. Markucci?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Murby?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGovern.
Thank you.
Mr. McGovern, thank you. Thank you for helping the neighbors out on this.
No problem, thank you.
So the next item, we're going to defer. This is a request to approve the endorsement of the approval-not-required application for the Hinkley South incorporating the additional land authorized for disposition at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. We just got that today. So we're going to defer that to our meeting on June 15th. The planning board, I think, has scheduled their review of it for June 21st, so this won't delay any of those things. That'll be deferred to our next meeting. Next is a request from Pollard's Barbecue to request live music performance at their food truck at the Medfield State Hospital on June 11, 2021. This is an event at which Zelis will be serving beer. Now, we'll have live music, and it looks like we have Pollard himself joining us for this approval. Welcome, Doug.
How are you all? Thank you for adding me on so quickly.
Oh, thank you for joining us, and how's it going for you this year?
Good, good. It's going pretty well. We probably average at about 100 people a day.
That's great. That's great. So what are the plans for the 11th?
So Zelis is going to be attending us as well, and they've graciously secured the police detail as requested. It worked out really well, us working together up at the state hospital. We had a great turnout. With them coming up, we probably doubled our occupancy for that evening.
That's great. And so who-
Still on the 11th, we've got a local guy, Jamie Walker and friends from Dover, and a few other people that are fairly local that have a band. They, I guess they were with the Swinging Stakes a few years ago and had some great success, but they've kind of mutated into other band members, and they plan on setting up in the field area.
Great. Pete, any questions?
No.
Gus, any questions? All right. We have a stage set up, or what's the, what's the setup going to be?
Just on the grass, I also had a question about the level of the grass that's up there. Do you have any update on the lawn care? I know, I heard from a rumor that they had some emergencies in the family that they were dealing with, but there hasn't been much lawn care up in that area.
So you're looking to know when it's going to be mowed?
Yeah, it's pretty high. I mean, I'm anticipating going out there with a weed whacker, whereas Zelis set up before, they're pretty overgrown, where they're going to be setting up for the 11th. And then with the band we'll set up, it's very high over there as well.
Nick or Christine, any, any mowing updates?
Nick. We just talked about having them go up to mow.
Okay.
I think Roberta Lynch has a mower.
I have a feeling I know what I'm going to do on Friday before our meeting.
All right. If there's further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve this request.
So you have, so this is, is this an update to the, I'm looking, I'm trying to find the item on my agenda.
It was an update.
This is an update. This is an, this was added, added.
So this is, so I'm winging this, because I, when I downloaded, apparently it wasn't on the website either. So we're, I move that we approve a request from Pollard's Barbecue and Zelis Brewing to conduct an event on June 11th.
Just the live music? Just live music?
Just live, just live music on June 11th at the state hospital.
We've approved the rest already. We've approved the rest already.
So this is just the live, so all we're doing is approving live music?
Just live music.
Okay. I move that we approve live music for the Pollard's Barbecue, Zelis Brewing on June 11th.
Second.
Mr. Markucci?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Murby?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just one, what are the hours going to be?
I think Zelis has it set up till 7:30. And then I'll be there 11 to 7:30 as well.
That's what was making me feel like Pete. The outdated agenda.
It's not on my agenda either, Gus.
It was a late addition, I'm very grateful.
Must come in today.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Doug. Appreciate it.
What are the hours of the music?
I believe that the music will be 4 to 7:30.
4 to 7:30, okay. Thank you.
All right. On our consent agenda, we have a request for a one-day liquor license for Zelis Beer at Rocky Woods for June 20th, 2021, from 12 to 4 p.m. St. Edward's requests a one-day liquor license for June 3, 2021, from 6 p.m. to 9 p.m. There's a request for a one-day beer and wine permit for June 19th, 2021, from 5 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. for the Zulo Gallery Center for the Arts. And we have to vote to sign certificates of achievement for Quinn Spitzer, Daven Zame, Christopher Douglas Page, Adrian Sheehy, and David T. Jones for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. I presume these are the folks who will have their court of honor on June 19th. So are there any questions on the consent agenda?
No questions.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the four items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Markucci?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Murby?
Aye.
I just, I just want, I just want to note, just for the record, because as, as a lawyer, I appreciate these kinds of distinctions, is that the request from Gene to use the hospital for the reception for the mural was an appointment and a potential vote. The Pollard's Barbecue live music was an action item, and then these four things, three things on the consent agenda. So, pretty good. Pretty, pretty fine distinctions between those, those three items. Yes, Mr. Sorrell?
So I just want a clarification that the one-day liquor license for Zelis is actually a beer and wine. Is that correct? Because that's all they can hear.
Beer and wine license for Zelis?
Yes.
All right. So with the amendment that the Zelis request is a beer and wine license, why don't we revote the consent agenda?
I move that we revote, let's just revoke that one. Well, all right. With item 10, request for one-day beer and wine license for Zelis Beer at Rocky Woods for June 20th as an amended request on the consent agenda, I move that we approve all four items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Markucci?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
Okay. Town Administrator update?
I have a very exciting update, that we will be celebrating Arbor Day on Thursday at 4:30 in front of the post office. You can sign the proclamation when you attend on Thursday.
Excellent. Anything else?
That's all I have this evening.
All right. Next meeting date, June 15th. Oh, actually, it will be the continuation of the hearing on Friday at 7:00, and then June 15th is our next regular meeting. Selectment reports, Mr. Peterson?
The Medfield cares about protection met, and the highlight was that Susan Cowell is resigning, retiring from the school system, and so that there was a farewell to Susan. There was a very cool thing that, I don't know who got us, the committee onto it, but it's called tribute, and everybody records a video, and then they put them all together, and Susan got a 20-minute goodbye video, and she apparently loved it. So that's great.
That's great. Gus?
My, my main activity, I think, was the fence at the end of Joseph Pace Road, and I'd just like to thank Medfield Meadows for their just, their flexibility to address that need. And in light of the fact that you brought far more family members to the Memorial Day celebration, or not, not celebration, but memorial session than I did, I'll let you